Anybody have an order? It's ten. Councilmember Varet.
Brother.
Councilmember Cavatayon.
President.
Councilmember Dakmager. Your pro Tim Gillert.
President.
Councilmember Kajerski.
Brother.
I'm sorry, Mayor Kajerski. Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Siegel.
And I talked to Dr. Siegel and he's in the Mackinac race tomorrow. He's leaving early, so I need a motion to excuse him from tonight's.
Second.
Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Steve saying on the agenda, do we have any changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Now the next item is approval of the minutes of the June 18th regular meeting. Pages three to nine.
I've moved that we approve the minutes.
Under. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sure.
Um, we're receiving different board committee and commission minutes. Pages six to the pages 10 to 16, I need a motion to accept in the public domain. Some.
Second.
Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
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 Dale.
Hello, everyone.
You guys, they smile and.
I'll add to the agenda. Everything looks good on the finances. This is going to add to your general fund reserves and other fund reserves for the most part. Uh, first of all, on the checks and invoices, they totaled $342,000 for the month of June. Again, even though that's for the pending current fiscal year, I should say prior fiscal year, June 30, 24, we're still receiving invoices for the month of June that'll happen throughout the current. But in total, you had $342,000 in invoices. Uh, key ones, Art Tucker, there was a hydrant repair of $3,850 bucks. Asphalt control corporate or asphalt control, $22,800 for concrete repairs throughout the city. They've been doing an extensive amount of work under Mike as far as repairing roads throughout the community. Putman, they were working on parts of Ballantyne. There's approximately $190,000 bill and bills yet to come in that would be for this prior fiscal year. Police car, uh, computer upgrades, $12,500. And some Rex software for the Department of Rex Department of 4,000. Other than that, they're all routine invoices, no surprises on them.
Please.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of items and they're more for clarification for everybody here and or who's ever watching. Thank you for being forthcoming, transparent and easy to handle. Um, the, it's item number four, six, seven, three, three, the Dropbox for $27,000. Can you explain it? Is this outside?
Correct.
Okay, so is it for the new Dropbox for the city for taxes?
Correct, it's been in, it's installed.
Okay, so that, all right, just clarification and then, uh, there were a couple of items regarding wells. In particular, what I saw was four, six, seven, four, one, so it's a refund. So do we refund somebody mid-season? I mean, if they change their mind, do we just say, okay, you get half your money? How does that work?
I would think they would prorate it.
Is it prorated or yeah, that's, I'm just.
Unless they never arrived and just put down the initial payment and had to return.
Okay.
I would have to ask.
I just would, yeah, I know that Dr. Siegel's not here, so I would just future like clarify patient on how that works.
But I'll follow up and check with Courtney if it goes a partial refund or a full refund.
Okay. So I'm going on to the next one. Um, four, six, seven, five, five, I know that's from the Girls Point Shores Improvement Foundation. It's the park carts, which is fabulous, they were $3,200. But when do we see that that we were reimbursed from the improvement foundation for our initial expense? Where do we see that in the registry?
Yeah, it would be in our, oh, actually.
I'm sorry.
It'd be in our miscellaneous revenues when we receive it. I don't know if it's been received yet.
Okay, I, I probably, well, okay, so.
But it wouldn't show up as a separate line.
That just a lot of people were wondering, what is this? Where, when are we going to see that? Um, then, um, four, six, seven, five, seven is the Van Fleet and branding. I know that's from communications that was already promised. I get that and I believe that Ted is going to discuss that later. But if anybody was wondering where that money came from, it approved of branding in the communications budget originally um, for, uh, Girls Point Shores, so that's why I'm just bringing that up. Um, and then the computer, I know the 12, five, eight, eight, but four, six, seven, eight, nine is yet another computer for PS. Our computers, so.
Lieutenant was in car computers to Dell maintenance.
Yes.
Dell marketing agency.
New.
So part of software or hardware?
Every day.
Okay, cause so.
All four cars got all brand new computers.
So, but it was in different cells, like there was one for the, the $12,000 and then like one cell below that was another $27,500, so they were all the compensation.
Two different bills from Dell.
Okay.
So that might be what you see there, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's all.
Dale, this is the first, sorry, go ahead, uh.
You can ask questions, please.
Um, this is the first month of the new fiscal year. Do we have any cutoff problems or do you see any cutoff problems given that we're in accrual based reporting?
Yeah, there won't be any.
Okay.
I just have two quick questions. One was there were a number of, um, checks for hardware that was zero, 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 Great Lakes and something else. What was that?
If they were originally issued through accounts payable, they're a wrong dollar amount, they'd be voided. Oftentimes a report will show it be, if it's zero, zero, it's a voided check.
The second question has to do with Thosson Swift. So I noticed that there were four invoices paid for the month and they totaled around $19,000 for the month. But yeah, that had a lot of legal activity there, I think. Are we paying a lot of money for like travel expenses or hotel? What's, what's the, what's the?
I would actually have to look at the details of the invoice. It may have been two months worth of billing.
It was two months of bill because I did look back in June, but still 9,500 a month seems high for legal services.
General, I believe Brian puts down very specific details on his invoices of what the extras are.
Our budget, I think, is $100,000 for legal, isn't that?
Sounds alright.
So $10,000.
Right, I just, I went back for the month and the previous month was 3,500, which is probably just the retainer with the same.
Yeah, correct.
I just, I, I'm just curious if we're paying money for, uh, Courtney's not vocal, so we may be paying money for travel. How much money do we pay for travel?
I don't believe you pay for travel. It's just extras hoping about what would be considered the normal for retainage.
And we're not paying for like hotel bills or are we doing the now? No. I just, I'm trying to figure out this $8,000. I thought we should have that a better explanation.
Is there any other questions for Dale? If not, thank you, Dan, a motion to approve this check register, Ron. Some more.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any financial statements, uh, Dale?
In wrapping up June 24 for our various funds, the general funds that we were going to be able to add to our reserves, give or take, it, right now it's sitting at 200,000, but we still have additional invoices to come in. Primarily the biggest difference we've had as far as any surprises is we used the balance of ARCA funds, which was an additional 150 coming in. And the other interest earnings, what we originally did this past budget, we only allocated 5,000 to 10,000 interest earnings and we're well over $200,000.
My interest income for 213,000, that's a nice surprise.
Well, and then a million dollars, 1.2 was moved to the capital improvement fund. So interest is 60,000 plus in that fund.
Just that.
You're considerably over on revenues. So on revenues, you're in great shape, no surprises, no shortfalls. Expenditures, department by department, you're under, except for there were additional money set aside to improve the financial position of the health insurance fund where additional funds were agreed to to transfer over. And there were some additional months placed in the capital improvement fund for long-term improvements. So on the finances, general funds in great shape, all your funds are in good shape. Major and local street funds, you got about a million dollars in reserves between the major and local streets. I mentioned earlier, we have above $190,000 in bills coming in yet for the month of June for concrete work. Uh, that fund though, you're still going to have an ample amount of reserves because you had a capital improvement bond in 2013, 2022, and that still has funds available to help pay for street paving. Water and sewer fund, you're going to be in good shape. The last quarter, sales were down compared to the prior, or the prior fiscal years. Uh, total units sold were less than the year before, primarily September of '22. Sales were almost 30,000 units above what September of '23 was. September '23 is this fiscal year as part of the June cycle. But all in all, you're in good shape in the water and sewer fund too. So all your funds look good.
Good to hear, good to hear, Dale. Any other questions for Dale? That's Sandra, Friday's chair report.
Um, like Dale mentioned, the finances are in great shape, uh, no unusual payments. Elevator was paid and operated, and operating, uh, we had a discussion about the yacht club donation, uh, for the 4th of July. And so, uh, we're still debating about the amount that, you know, we did raise money. So we're trying to come up to an agreement of how much money to donate.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
That's the question, but.
Yes, go ahead.
When do you expect that you'll resolve that number?
Came up with a preliminary number. I don't know if Steve wants to mention it, $9,500.
Right, so that was between the funds we raised from donations, sponsors as well as other donations and what we had budgeted. Uh, we have a bottom balance of 9,500, we were going to send that amount. Uh, the fireworks were $30,000, so. I just want to make sure, we'd have to wait another month for the next. I'm asking you to, go ahead with that.
No, um, yeah, we, I wasn't sure if everybody was good with that.
Yeah, I spoke with everybody.
Okay. And then the next meeting is August the 13th.
No, you, you, we changed it to the sixth.
Oh.
But we might have.
Oh, you're right.
There might be another change, so.
Okay, you're right.
We'll post the date.
I just have one more question to maybe back on Dr. Schroeder's question. So I was looking at all the little cells for all the expenses. The finance, Department 201, financial admin was a little bit over for the year.
We bumped up our health insurance transfer.
And I see that, um, but it was 20%, more than 20% over for legal expenses. So I might, you don't have to, I would like to know what they were.
Well, if you.
Twenty-two, twenty-two to 20.
We can put a recap together if you like.
I can tell you, I mean, I can tell you, so if you remember, the biggest increase in that budget was the issue, we're over $20,000 on the, the pit bull issue. So that's, that was where the bills really jumped. But that was the year.
It was the next.
It was this fiscal year.
Okay.
It was last year, but it was this fiscal year. So that was the biggest, uh, one thing that we had.
So to, I'm just trying to look at other issues that we've had in the past. There was quite a lot of money spent on a sign ordinance issue a few years prior to that. It was '21, '22 calendar year, maybe?
Correct.
Um, so I just, just for future, if you could get back with me on what that was.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Thank you, Dale, thank you, Sandra. Um, Chief, public safety.
Evening. Very small, light report for you tonight. Uh, just in general, since the last time I met with you all, it's been pretty quiet in the public safety department. I know I say that a lot, but if there had been, we're clarifying what that means, so I continue to say it. Um, but no major house fires, no fatal accidents, it's just kind of business as usual.
Quiet is good.
Quiet is good, I just, but if there was something major, I'd give you all the details, but you know, uh, we're just doing it. But quiet has been good. Uh, let's just reference the 4th of July. No incidents recorded police wise. A very successful night all the way through the whole village. Um, I know most of you spend time in the park. It's what goes on outside the park, you know, it's a little chaotic and we don't have a lot of control over it. We put extra cars out, extra people out, try to monitor it. The knockout room, we've been successful every year and in this past year, like really quiet, haven't radio. So, uh, so as far as public safety, we're very successful. Um, I have just seen training notes to update you on some of the things the guys have been doing. Uh, starting with Jason Cook and Officer Billy Hall just returned from Grayling, Michigan. They were there for a week with the SRT team doing some advanced training. Uh, I give them a lot of credit, they go in the middle of summer, there's no air conditioning, they're like 12-hour days. It's, uh, it's a lot of work, but, um, to have enough credit hours or training hours for the year, it's, it's a trip they do annually. So that is under our belts. It's, it's, it's so much training, they also bring it back here, we get to utilize it with our staff, so it's very important. Uh, Lieutenant Tony Spina, uh, as of Friday, completed Staff and Command. He told me unofficially he had a 92% overall average in the class, but it is a very prestigious, and I mentioned it to you, leadership program that, uh, we, we invested in Tony and for the future here. And, uh, and it's a lot of work. I mean, I felt bad when he signed up for it, to be honest with you, but he really tackled the project and did a great job. And again, he just completed that on Friday, so credit to him. We spoke about the in-car computers real quick, that was a huge upgrade for us there. I think our last computers were close to 11 years old. Our last upgrade, they told us, we can't take another upgrade. Um, but like technology, if you buy a computer 11 years ago and put it in today, you can just see, it's just, you know, it works so much better. So all the feedback from the guys is very appreciated. We thank you for that, it was really needed. Um, today we finished up processing our candidate for the police academy that starts in one month, 30 days from now. Devin Denaldi will attend the McComb Police Academy and he'll be here in December. So, um, credit to him. We found him kind of at the last minute and you have to put him through all the pre-employment stages of psychological exams, physical exams, uh, uniforms, orientations, and he just tackled it. And what I knew was if he did tackle this the way he did, he would be the right person and so far so good. Again, I said that before, let's come back to home a little bit. And then just something I've noticed, uh, at, at the six-month mark, we're up to 104 medic responses this year, so. I know it's just been busy, um, but I like that, it's our best service, so just a little FYI on that. Again, very light report, just little odds and ends from the last month. Any questions? Any question, happy to answer that.
Chief, does, uh, the entire department work on the 4th of July?
No, no, they do not. So, uh, we had three people on days and three people scheduled for nights. The day shift held over, so they end at 7:00 PM. So we doubled up the cars. I, where I stand at post in the park, Gross Point Farms sends over an officer as well. Uh, and where we put them on to, the dispatch knows he's here, he can answer runs or she, it's been both in the past. So, uh, and then the mutually, right? Like if we really needed the farms and the woods and the park, we just put that over the radio and they come. Uh, but like again, what goes on outside the park, you know? Like that 40 minutes right before the show starts, like all of a sudden we're just people coming out of their houses, people just pulling up and parking and some of that parking's not legal, but you know, we just do the best we can. So we have, we have a lot of staff that can, you know, at any minute notice, but we have tons of resources. So that's the long version.
It was great to see, Chief. I saw three uniformed public safety vehicles, three separate islands south of Vernier. And, uh, just basically just watching, just sitting there watching.
Visibility is important, I'm, I'm glad to hear that because I didn't see that.
Thank you, Chief, we're overseeing again, very quiet and exciting 4th of July. Uh, public works, Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Quick update for you guys tonight, the DVW has been very busy keeping up with, uh, maintenance items throughout the city from sprinklers and grass cutting to building maintenance and road, road repairs. Uh, we continue to also do maintenance in the harbor. Bruce Haynes and I have been experimenting with adding a couple of agitators in an attempt to clear some seaweed uh, from some trouble areas. But what we're trying to do is not just push seaweed from one well to another, so we will be moving them around to different spots as we try to make all of our boat owners happy. Um, as a side note, the yacht club did start using the seaweed boat about four days ago. So they're going to start removing it like they usually do every year, they just started four days ago. So we're removing what we can and so are they. Uh, our concrete contractor is finishing up with South Edgewood this week. I think you did a great job with the patch repairs on Putman and both Edgewoods. They will be moving to another city, uh, for a job around a school that they need to get done and then be back here in a few weeks to continue on with our repair list, uh, in other parts of our city. Uh, finally, I would like to just take a quick moment to thank Fred Lees and Corey Reed, who both worked on the 4th of July for us. I thought the day was great with, uh, fantastic weather. Personally, without diving in too deep, I personally, I loved hearing the screams of the kids on the rides with the music and the smell of the food and I, I literally felt like I was at a fair. I think that's the first time I felt that way at the park, so I thought it was great. That's, that's all I have for you unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Mike? Well, I have to thank you, I got my first tour of the pool.
Yeah.
Station.
Yeah.
And I was very impressed, uh, just with the infrastructure, but also with the aging of the infrastructure and the fact that people like you and Bruce are keeping, uh, the machinery going.
It's been a tough year in that filter house this year, but we're getting through it.
I welcome all the council, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's, it's really quite, it goes down what, 10 feet below, below grade?
Yeah, maybe.
There's two major pumps and the pool needs one pump to be fully functioning at all times. One is, uh, a lot older than the other, but Bruce was explaining everything, very impressive. Uh, Park Committee, Jen, you want to go first?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share my report. Uh, we are just past the halfway point of the pool season. We are in the second week of the second session of youth swim and tennis lessons. Later this week, we're going to start advertising some discounted pricing on our summer-long water aerobics and early morning swim programs. Since we're halfway through, if people want to join us midway, they can. Uh, our shark swim team is in its penultimate week with our final dual meet of the season tomorrow. We're currently one and three, but we're looking for another victory tomorrow as we take on Gross Point City at home. Uh, as shared on social media, the pool's going to close at four o'clock tomorrow for our second home meet. Next week, we have our Lakefront Swimming Association prelims and finals. They're hosted by Gross Point Farms, but they'll be held at Gross Point Park. Uh, we'll celebrate, um, hopefully another great finish. We finished second the past couple of years and we'd like to make another great showing. Um, and then we have our official celebration a week from Thursday at our Sharks Swim Team banquet. Uh, since the last meeting, as Mike mentioned, we enjoyed a wonderful 4th of July, uh, event. And as Mike said, it was, it was wonderful thanks to a lot of hard work. Um, and I'm sure Councilman Schroeder will discuss a little bit more of that in the Parks Committee, uh, report. Uh, we're looking forward to this week's library in the park event, that's on Thursday, starting at 10:00 AM. We do this every year. Um, the Gross Point Public Library comes, they set up a story walk and a drop-in craft and kids can check out books. Um, it's the book bike, it's a wonderful event. Um, and then our annual fishing derby is on Sunday. And again, I'm sure the mayor will speak more to that, but, um, registration's going to begin at 7:15, um, with the first cast at 7:30. Last year, moving into a Sunday, really increased our participation, so we're anticipating quite a few young fishermen and fisherwoman, fisherboys, fishergirls being out there. Uh, and again, I'm sure the mayor will speak to that. Uh, I do want to take a second to extend my thanks to Mike Way and to Bruce Haynes, who have worked tirelessly last week, um, on several pool and park projects. Um, I know the mayor mentioned the pump houses, um, working against some aging as are the pool and our locker room facilities. So it's becoming increasingly harder to stay on top of some of the things that are aging, but they really, um, deserve a lot of, uh, thanks for the fact that they're making a really tough situation, uh, work well. Um, our goal moving forward is to maintain 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM open swim hours through Labor Day. I'm currently working on staff availability for that final stretch, which all of these makes me feel like the summer is like going too fast because we're all talking about August and September. Uh, but we're going to do our best to keep it open as much as possible with staffing and obviously if weather allows. Uh, at next month's meeting, I'll speak more about our final pool event of the summer, which is our doggy day, which I know everybody looks forward to, um, here in town. I'm going to answer any questions anyone has.
Do you have any questions for Jen?
Just a comment, I, I really appreciate what you've done with social media, your presence on Facebook. I check the village, uh, Gross Point Shores Facebook almost every day. And it's your presence either in a video or some announcement, almost on a daily basis. So thank you for such a great job keeping our residents so warm.
I appreciate it. I try to, I try to set stuff so that it goes out and I'm not overwhelming people with flyers and information, but it's a lot to know.
But see, a lot to oversee and you're doing a great job, Jen.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, would you like to add?
Yes, so we had a Parks Committee today and, um, just the 4th of July event. Uh, our, our city manager, Steve Poloni, mentioned this is a record number for us. We had 2,840 participants come through the gates, uh, for this 4th of July. So it was, it was a record year for us. We had two bands this year, uh, that went over pretty well. We probably will switch a band maybe next year, I think, spur change of pace. Um, but yes, I agree with the carnival atmosphere, the Pirates, uh, both the back and forth was, I wrote that, that right myself. It was kind of scary for me and, uh, yeah, I've been on the Mackinac race, uh, 4th year in the Mackinac race many times. You get the same nauseating feeling sometimes, so it's good for the kids to experience that. And also the, the mini Ferris wheel was really a nice added addition to that as well. So I think it did make it more of a 4th of July feel to it, a carnival type feel, which was great. The fireworks, wonderful, I'm glad that we're contributing to the, um, contribution to the, to support those fireworks this year. I think that's important to do. Um, a couple of other events that are coming up, the fishing derby is going to be wonderful again. Um, last year we had 100 people in the dock, so hopefully we'll have something similar this year. Um, it's obviously a comberly type of event and it'll last about an hour and 45 minutes of fishing and then some, uh, some prizes and things like that will take us to about 10. Uh, pickleball, so we've extended the pickleball hours, uh, and we extended it both in the morning and the late evening. So, um, we start at 7:30 now and we end our last reservation at 7:30 PM to 9:00. So, uh, I checked online the Senate Genus and I go to the park often and the Senate Genus is usually blocked full for the night, uh, as well as the 7:30 early start. So people are, are utilizing the extended hours, which is wonderful. And it's been, uh, it seems like it's been busier with pickleball this year than previous years. We're going to have the first pickleball tournament that we've done traditionally, the annual one that started about three years ago. It'll be on Saturday morning, August 10th at 9:00 AM. It'll be, uh, 16 teams, so 32 players. Like last year, we're going to restrict it because we've set an overwhelming response to Gross Point Shores residents only. But if we don't fill those 32, uh, positions or 16 teams, three days before we'll open it up there that's such that a, a Gross Point Shores resident can play with a non-resident if there's still room at the end. So three days before we'll, we'll change the reorbit for signup. But until that three days beforehand, it's going to be Gross Point Shores residents only. And so first come, first served, so, so to speak. The second tournament we're going to do on, and we'll have a rain, a rain date of the following day, August 11th in case there's a different weather on the town. The next tournament will be the century tournament, which we'll do on September 21st. Again, the rain date the day afterwards, September 22nd, also 9:00 AM. 16 teams, 32 players, again, it'll be residents only initially. Three days beforehand, we'll open it up to one member at least of Shores resident and one non-member if there's, then rest, if there's, if the slots allow that. Uh, we do that again because of the fact that, um, it's fairly to all ages to have everyone play, but usually it's a 20-something-year-old that wins the, uh, all ages tournament. Um, so some of the people like me feel a little bit cheated by that, but at the same time, we, if we just had a century tournament only, which means that both players have to add up to at least 100. So you could have a 50-year-old and 50-year-old and you could have a, a 30-year-old and 70-year-old. But when you're 20 years old, it's hard to find an 80-year-old necessary to play. So we wouldn't, wouldn't want to be discriminatory to the younger people or the teenagers that may want to play, uh, with only a century tournament, that's why we have them both. I wish we had enough time to have just a, a, you know, female tournament and a male tournament. It's just, um, it's just not enough time to do it, I don't think, or enough, enough, uh, at least I have to, to organize this tournament. So that's, that's what we're doing for this year. Maybe in the future, uh, when, when of us, uh, family obligations, we can do that. And then, uh, what else? Um, let's see, the peace mitigation, we talked about that. It's, I think you've all noticed improvement in peace mitigation this year. We've done a number of efforts, the, the yellow lights, the, the miler flag, uh, flags, the, uh, grass going longer, the spraying of the grass, the goose nesting, our improvement removal, and now trace the dog. So it's, it's, I think, you know, it's a big improvement this year, likely the majority of it was probably from trace the dog. We had another suggestion at the Parks Committee today to maybe switch from this yellow, you used to turn lights to green. Uh, maybe that'll make a difference, I don't know, but you know, it's worth a try to do everything we can to make it a more pleasant experience for our residents. And, uh, we talked about the pool extensively and I think they're, uh, excuse me, uh, Steve Poloni will talk about that in his report. Any questions about parks?
I, I just have one.
Yes, Danielle.
I know that you and probably talking to Steve, um, and I know that there's been some concern about. concern about litigation illegally about the diving board. We'd like to do a diving board, change in the new pool in the future, but when I was in the park on Sunday, there, it was a joy to watch one long line of probably 12 young men and boys. And they were all, I would say between 16 and 25, I mean, just having so much fun off the diving board. I mean, it was just a fun, and I remember when I, my kids were on the Sharks, the coaches there would do just a fun event with the kids off the board, just after they did their, it was just a fun excursion. And finally, little kids, in my opinion, that are learning how to dive, sometimes they dive deep for the first time when they finally make that. And even if your starting block is at, I don't know, five or six, six feet or whatever you're going to do it at, eight feet, whatever it's going to be, I'm just, it's nice to have a diving board. You can have one that doesn't absorb as much, yeah.
On our first draft, so we, I'll get into the report later, there were two diving boards in the first draft.
Even one. I just kind of kept watching those young men and teenage boys just, you know, just one after another, who could outdo each other with a cannonball and dive. And you usually see that with maybe younger people.
Danielle, I think a new move has come to me and said, please make sure there's a diving board in the pool. So I'm also in favor of that. And I think also, it goes beyond just the pleasure of doing that. I know that the lifeguards like to participate in that Top Guard competition. I think part of it is deep water.
We even had Top Guard in many, many years. But yes, there was a period, there was a lot of deep end diving while the kids.
Right, with the Top Guard competition, maybe that can be revived.
Yeah.
But we certainly couldn't if we didn't have a deeper pool.
Well, thanks for letting me put my two cents in. I, again, sometimes it's just a joy to watch other people enjoy it. You don't necessarily have to partake, but it's just a joy.
And I may have missed something for the Parks Committee, as it's here too, then she listens and puts something.
Did you want to say anything about the signs in the harbor that we talked about?
Oh, sure. So we did talk about, thank you for reminding me, so we talked about the electrical hazard of the harbor, and we say no fishing, but we're going to put up some signs that say electrical hazard, just to make it more clear. And also, we're probably going to change the fishing portion of the pier. There's a part that's more narrow and a part that opens up wider, and there's some hazard, like if a golf cart goes through there, it's a narrow area, if people have their fishing gear all over, even people walking over, it makes it hard to get through them. So probably restrict fishing in the future, once we get the signage to just be the wider part of the pier. Thank you, Debbie.
Well, Don, it was an excellent report, and thank you for your involvement with tournaments. I get a real big joy coming to the park and seeing people playing tennis, playing pickleball. What the pickleball is doing is feeding the tennis players. They can't get on the pickleball courts, and they're there, so they get a bigger racket, they play tennis. Again, just, we're maximizing the fun at the park. I mean, the only, I think the only place that we really, if we have a demand for it, is with volleyball, to have like, maybe like a beach volleyball competition or something, but the other city, maybe starting with the lifeguards or something. I mean, it is an Olympic event, and I don't know, that might be something to check out as well. But thank you, Don. And again, you're bringing the fun and excitement. Danielle sees it with the lineup there. It's, I mean, Debbie, thanks for being on the committee. It's a real, it's a real joy to, that's what we have, that's the centerpiece of our city, is the park. That's it. And so, bring in more joy, bring in more people. I think that's, that's really the hit for the year. Jen, thank you for your involvement. I mean, I just, I can't wait for the fishing derby, you know? I don't particularly like the 7:30 in the morning, but that's when the fish are out. So one thing I did notice at the Fourth of July, a lot of kids that are more linnier than I am, they would take a shortcut, and they would walk around the, where it's roped at the end of the dock. And I saw like five or six kids do it, were younger. Again, they could stretch and do it, but that's open water there. There's nothing that we can do about it. We have it roped off. There is a rope right there, but again, there's a gap of about this much. I certainly can't fit through it, or not easily. And I saw kids going sideways and walking in. But that's, kids will be kids, so I think if you can warn them about the electrical hazard, like the yacht club does, they have signage pretty much everywhere at the yacht club, that this electrical hazard are potentially with stray voltage. So thank you for everybody's involvement and for bringing fun for our community.
And Mayor, I just want to go on one more comment about the volleyball. I think that's a great idea. Lifeguards or even contacting maybe the high schools to see if they want to, you know, have a resident, non-resident, or invited non-resident with residents competition would be great. Also, I just want to mention, I've seen more people playing beach tennis this year than last year. So we had some Facebook publicity about that, and since I've seen probably three or four times of people trying to play beach tennis. And maybe we should have a beach tennis clinic sometime to like introduce people on how to play. That might be a reasonable thing to do.
That would be a great idea.
Did they change the sand that the sand here that we played with?
Changing this thing would be a little bit financial on ours, I think. And the sand's already there, you know, play with beach shoes, you know, water shoes, they probably work great, or tennis shoes.
Jen, I forgot how many years ago it was, but I contacted Kay Drake, and she contacted Gross Point Park, and they were interested in their lifeguards playing beach volleyball against our lifeguards. And then, for some reason, I think we had rain, and it never got rescheduled. This would have been probably nine years ago, eight, nine, 10 years ago.
It's certainly something that once we get through those finals, I will bring up with the directors.
I know you're all involved.
But we can certainly try to get something scheduled.
It's just food for thought.
It'd be exciting to watch, so.
Yeah, because I'll be watching the Olympics just the same way from the comfort of my chair. Thank you, Don, thank you, Jen, Debbie.
Can I just say one thing after the electrical signs? And the reason I'm so concerned about it is because it did happen in Port Huron, and it was my nephew's friend, and they were together that night, and the friend jumped in the water, and he was electrocuted like that in the rain out because of all the stray electricity. And I walked up here at night time, and you see a lot of our kids, and they're, you know, I'm just concerned because they're fishing over there and stuff, so.
Well, that was believed to be the cause of death for Norm Cash years ago. He was up north at Beaver Island, fell in the water, and he died of electrocution, they said, many, many years ago, the famous, famous Trent Tyler. But something, again, we're aware of, and I'd say, we're going to address.
I think it's sensible.
Okay, thanks. Harbor Committee, does somebody want, is there anything to?
I don't.
They haven't met or anything, Don?
I don't know.
Infrastructure, Bob?
We didn't have a meeting this last month, so that means pretty status quo.
Okay. Improvement Foundation, Sandra?
I did not attend, and, but I believe Steve has a report.
Really, there wasn't much to, I was not a mediator, but Rob said today that, oh, Danielle, were you?
No, my household was. I believe Morgan Stanley was managing the funds and a significant fee. And the Gross Point Shores Improvement Foundation is doing fabulous with their investment and their endowment. Morgan Stanley was managing it through Asmat's capital, and there was substantial fee. They're going to bypass that Asmat's commission completely, so.
Okay.
That was the only pearl that I got from it.
Yeah, I mean, talk about what I'm going to talk about the pool.
Okay.
Okay, good. Communications Committee, Ted?
Good evening, honorable mayor and City Council. How's everyone doing tonight? So I'd like to start with the elephant in the room, more or less the elephant in that room. As you walked in tonight, you saw something that you haven't seen before, and that is a television screen with our messages on there. What a bright way to enter, it's a nice way to enter this building, seeing those colorful images repeating itself. So I hope you had a chance to look at them before you leave. Book, of course. And so, I wanted to thank Michael Way and his team for installation, and I want to thank Steve for the approval of the TV screen. I've been working with Courtney Delmarche upstairs on a plan to execute our messages, and we do have one, and so we're going to make sure that it's coordinated. The same messages design on our screen will be appearing on our website and our social media, and we're working, making a plan to work with Jen on her messages. And you mentioned earlier that Jen does a lot of posting. Thank you, Jen, for doing a little posting. But we're going to try to get a little more consistency in design, and how those look and feel, and how we develop them, and make sure that they're across all the different stages of our communications. So that's a great thing that's happening. The, July 4th, I spent over 12 hours here in the park, working, and what a great, great day and evening that we had. Lots of great pictures, over 200 photos that we posted. One thing that I did do was I traversed the park 50,000 times, so I was literally able to live the park everywhere. And the thing that struck me is that I didn't think about whose poop, because there wasn't any, just wasn't. This is the first time I've been covering the park in five years, so I didn't have to kind of step aside and worry about that. And so, the reason I bring that up is because the person who is our short spotlight for August is both Fran Bachmann and her dog, Trace. And so, I'm really proud of this article. It covers her life in a lot of things that you don't know about her or Trace, and so you'll be surprised when you read them. But one thing that is surprising is that they're here three times a day, for an hour, over there. Three times. When it's storming, they're there. When it's sunny and 93, and we're hiding either in the pool or someplace else, they're there, three times a day, every day, weekends, weekdays. And that, to me, is just remarkable. And so, we have some amazing volunteers here doing some amazing things, and I think her story is one that I'm going to be proud to share. The newsletter's coming along great. We're mostly done with that for August, including the short spotlight that I just mentioned. So that is going very well. The fishing derby that Jen mentioned, I'll be there on Sunday covering it. It's always a great event, and I look forward to that. And let's see, the brand refresh that Danielle mentioned earlier. So that's in progress, and I have a PowerPoint to explain all of it to you. So I'd like you to hold on to your questions until then. So I live branding in my professional world, and I teach branding at the university level. So it's something that I'm very familiar with. I have this 30 to 40 slide presentation that I'll either do next month or the following month that explains everything and answers all of your questions. And it's not answered in that PowerPoint, I'll be happy to answer those questions for you, why we're doing it, how's it going to improve the city, how's it going to improve our image and reputation, and increase visibility and awareness, and all the things that I teach in my marketing class. So that is exciting. I did look at the first set of logos, and they're not there yet, so they're still being refined. The next step is for that refinement, then to the Communications Committee for review. And once the Communications Committee, which includes city leadership, we're comfortable with it, then we'll present those to you inside that PowerPoint that I mentioned that explains what the purpose is and how we're, how we're doing it, and how we're going to improve the image and reputation for this city. So it's really exciting stuff. Obviously, I'm very excited about branding, and helping my city with branding is very much excitement. I'm also helping to lead a brand campaign for the Gross Point Public School system. So this is not something that is new to me, helping local organizations with branding. So it's very important to increase and improve those things that I just mentioned. So that pretty much covers our communications. It's a very exciting time, lots of good things happening, and I would take any questions.
Are there any questions for Ted? Well, Ted, you were everywhere on the Fourth of July, and walking around, and smiling, and greeting everybody, what a true ambassador you've become for the city, really. That's the best word I could think of to describe your activity.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Now, Danielle, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ted. Legal reporter?
Good evening, Mayor, thank you, Council, for having me. Since the date of the City Council meeting, I'll tell on June 18th, the City Attorney has engaged in the following general municipal matters on your behalf. Those include consulting with the city regarding boat leasing matters at, am I going to say this right, O'Shea's? Park, O'Shea's?
O'Shea's.
Okay, there we go, sorry. Consulted with the city regarding a memorandum of understanding that's entered into with the Southeast McComb Sanitary District concerning the operation of the city's sanitary sewer system. We are currently in the process of evaluating the implementation of the Michigan House Bill 5028, which was enacted into law by the Michigan Legislature only on July 8th. The law limits the authority of homeowners associations in Michigan to regulate solar power systems and other renewable energy and energy-saving devices, and could have collateral effects on the enforcement of the city's current solar power system ordinance. And finally, we've consulted with the city regarding various other administrative procedural matters. So if you have any questions regarding that, or anything you'd like to bring up, please let me know.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you for it. Steve, Manager's Report?
Yeah, Mayor, most things were covered in somebody's report, so I just have a couple quick things here. One, we are currently upgrading, currently we use the signup genius for some of our events and things. We are upgrading to what's called a rec desk. It is going to be a computer program that will allow residents to do much more than we're doing currently. Currently, if you sign up for a lesson, you then have to come here or to the park to pay for it, those type of things. We're limited on what we can do on some of the reservations, what we can do. This will be a custom program for us. It will allow residents to go on, sign up for swim lessons, tennis lessons, whatever, pay for them right online at the same time, get a schedule, those type of things. So we're going to be upgrading to that. That would probably for the next year, they'll be working on it in the off-season, this program for us, just want to let you know that. The other thing is the, we've had another meeting with the architects and the pool people on a conceptual design. We're hoping to bring something to council starting tonight, but we're still, we had enough, because as Danielle mentioned, we, you know, obviously, we were looking for everybody's input. We're not to that point, and we're trying to get to a point where we've consolidated just a couple ideas to work off of, and we're about two weeks away from that. We have a meeting next Wednesday with the architects and them again, and we have some really nice things to show and discuss, and we're hoping to have some price points in this first point and see if that, that comes to fruition. And really, that's all I have for tonight, Mayor. Everything else has been covered.
Good report. Any questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve, good report. Old business, new business, public comment? Do we have any public comment today?
Mr. Mayor? City Council? I'm Scott Channing, I'm new to the, new to the area. I absolutely love it here. One thing that I had noticed recently, I applaud the efforts of reducing our tax rate. I think that's fantastic. You don't see that very often. However, it feels a little premature when I'm looking at the roads. We don't have a specific millage to cover the roads, and yet I think our roads are just falling apart. I walk my dog twice a week, twice a day. I've fallen in the holes in the street down at Bernard and Lakeshore, and the road is just disintegrating, and everywhere I drive, it's the same. Now I go into the woods, I go everywhere else, I find a lot of that Michigan, that's just how we do roads around here. I don't think that's acceptable. But I'd like to see more effort, maybe a specific millage in the next, in the next round, where we say we're going to allocate this amount of money for roads, or how do we, how do we increase that and take care of our infrastructure? I mean, we're talking about brand imaging, we're talking about trying to make the place look better, to maintain the values of the homes, to keep people here, to bring new people here. But if we just don't have that appearance, I don't know how we get there. Is there anything we can do to change that, or in the general fund? I know that's something that... I know that's something that I've been bothering Mike, I don't know how many times here since I've been here, asking for this and that, and Mike's been fantastic, but he says, you know, he's got his hands tied. So that's something that is in your control. Is there something that can be done to?
We have been, we have been, you know, addressing that problem and Steve has a plan of what streets he's gonna be doing next. So he probably would be the best person to answer your concerns.
Yeah, I think we've talked about in the past that we went many years without doing work on infrastructure. We're now at the place where we have started in the last few years. We are currently on Putnam and this two South Edwoods doing work there, trying to do entire streets. Every street that we've done so far that residents come out and go, why are you only doing half the road or why are you only cement is so expensive? Every community is insane bulk. I mean, we're not alone. But we do have, we've got, we're, our next streets, we're, they're just finishing up these three streets. We're going to Stratton, Willow Tree, Clarview, Wilson, Greenborough, Fontana, Weber, Prior Cliff, Presswood, Renaud and Lake Shore and Vernier in that order. Hopefully, we'd like to get a lot done by October. We will not get this list entirely done by October just because of the amount of work that has to be done. But we do, we are trying to address this problem. Renaud and Lake Shore is on our list for sure. I know that's a really bad area. And we're one of the few communities in the Rose Point that does not have a millage. A lot of the other communities, that's, they can keep up on a little more because they do have a millage. We haven't done that and that's always a topic of discussion that's constantly.
Like evidence of how the woods takes care of the roads and they've got a millage for the roads, I don't think that's an effective way of doing it either.
No, no. No, it's already, it's so expensive and it's just hard to keep up with it in Michigan, as you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, for sure.
By the time the millage is approved, your prices have gone up.
Very true.
Due to inflation, so.
Absolutely.
The goal was always to do three streets a year and not necessarily the three worst, but the ones that were gonna deteriorate quicker than maybe other streets that were faulty. And at one time, we had a budget for $500,000 to address the three streets. That was kind of like, the way that went, we were trying to make sure the money was there to do major and minor street road repairs. But like Putnam, I can understand your, I mean, every time I drive on Cook Road though, my car, I'm like this, you know? I know it's, you know, my car shocks are shot or.
No, it's a street.
I don't go on Cook Road anymore.
I mean, it's just like, and it's patched up. I mean, it's not like there's potholes. There's no pothole, but I'm like, you know.
But I will say this, Mr. Mayor, is that it seems like everybody takes a patch as a repair and it's not. That's a temporary fix until you can repair the roads.
And it should be done with concrete. And we did one chore of the apron right in front of one of the doctor's houses all the way till Make Sure. What a big improvement. But they do it by segments. They cut it out and there's a term for it, but we're, and then they place a new piece of concrete, not asphalt, with asphalt. In general, it's not, I don't wanna say not permanent, but I've had my driveway now living in the, living there 29 years, we've done twice. And the guy says, well, that's what you get with asphalt.
Doesn't have the life of concrete, for sure. Okay, so that's.
Well, thank you, though. I appreciate you coming because we'll be more in tune to it.
I'll be back.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thanks for the time.
Any other public comment? If not, council member comments?
In the middle of summer, through our 4th of July, it almost seems like we're getting ready to go back to school and vacations. But I think it's a nice time to look at all of the achievements we have done. So our gracious resident who came here today is, let us know our roads do need a lot of money. Believe the last time it was inquired, if we did every road project and want to, it'd probably be about $16 to $18 million for the repairs because every street needs something. And if you, if you've been over on Putnam, Putnam's a nice little cutout street that doesn't get a lot of traffic, so really only residents probably drive through there. But you'll see the work that was done was, I think, very professionally done. It was solid cut, concrete, complete ripout, complete concrete insert. And it's a type of repair that we hope will last, you know, a good decade or two. Renaud's on the list. And so I live on Regal. I have a birdbath in front of my house, which is the term of art Mike Way introduced me to several years ago. And it's getting deeper and deeper and deeper. And my wife reminds me about it and I said, well, I was elected to council in 2021. I think our house is at the back end of the list now. It's just the way it's gonna be, which is fine. But we're well aware of the work that needs to be done, but it's also a great time to look at all the work that we have. And the picturesque views and vistas that we have, the 4th of July party is, I think, front and center, a great showcase for our city. We are very excited about our upcoming pool project in the next two, three years or so. We appreciate all the comments that we get from every resident on any issue, and we're looking forward to finishing this summer season up and moving into the fall and into the holiday season.
Thanks, John. Good comments. Daniel?
Again, I just want to give a shout out to Mike Way and Bruce. Everything in the park looked fabulous. Bruce, my husband and I tripped on a couple boards that were popping on the dock that we were on and like within the days he took care of it, which was. What?
He didn't even tell me about it.
I know. That was so nice. I walked over and he was tired and he just, oh yeah, I'll take care of anything. Yeah, so I mean, that was really nice. Ken, you were chief warranty, forgive me. You were always so approachable. And Joe Wheel, I mean that in a good way. So that was just a delight and it was nice. I saw how hard our city manager Steve worked all day being the bus line leader. And then lastly, all volunteers, thank you. And Dale, you have always been so approachable for anything, whether it's water bills. So, and we're very lucky to have him. Financial, it's, it's never, you don't feel like I'm taxing you. You're very gracious and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Danielle. Bob?
Well, I'm gonna talk about roads, but that's already been covered. There's again, a lot of complaints, but it takes time.
I think the amount anticipated to spend in this coming year has almost doubled last year. It was over $400,000. Steven Everett talking about $800,000 was your estimate?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a significant bump for how we spent four years.
It's not cheap either, so. But it's better than asphalt in the long term. That's it.
Thanks, Bob. Don?
I just want to thank all the residents and volunteers who committed a lot of time and research and effort and discussion on the water and sewage bill issues and the water and sewage itself, that's just the bills. And also to thank our city government who have gone to bat for us and have come up with some good solutions to reduce our fiscal portion of the water bill, which has been wonderful.
Jay?
I just want to thank city manager Poloney and his team for organizing such a wonderful event for 4th of July. I benefited from the trolley ride. It stopped right in front of my house, took me to the park, brought me back, didn't have to fight the traffic or the finding a parking lot, parking place. So it was a wonderful event, well-attended, and so thank you so much for organizing that.
Thank you, Sandra. Well, Ted, I'm gonna pull out that book. I made a color copy of it. It starts, it says, "It takes a village, takes a village," celebrating our Rose Point Shores community. And that's what we had till the 4th of July. We had a village. Steve, I took the trolley, thanks to Dale. Dale owns those two trolleys. He let us, well, he lent us shoes on. You know, and Ted, 12 hours, I think it may have done more, the way you approached people, taking an interest in them, asking them questions. Mike was there all day. Ken was there all day. Bruce, I mean, I saw Gary. It was the village, you know, surrounding this event and it was the high point for the whole year, clearly, clearly. I mean, tomorrow we have a home swim meet. It's our last swim meet. I'm very partial to it, 5:30. Just seeing the excitement for the children that are 17 years and under competing, maybe some of them for the last time competitively and forming friendships that will last, you know, their whole life. Library in a park, I've always thought that was a great idea to have storytelling, children hour, and we have it from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock this Thursday. The fishing derby is something that has grown and last year I couldn't be there, but we have, I picked up, we have 10 prizes, about 10 prizes, including a best dressed award and our council member, John's son, was with his grandfather two years ago from Clarkston that came in for the event. I mean, it's, it's just, we talk about the pickleball tournament, we talk about the happening, what's happening at the park, what's bringing people to the park? People that are walking every day on Lake Shore now stopping the park to see what's going on. It's so nice to be greeted right at the gate as you come in. I mean, and there's friendly gate guard there. I mean, always very approachable, dealing with a lot of, you know, visitors, a lot of guests. I mean, I just, I'm just tickled to be part of this community. And last I want to, there was a spotlight on Elizabeth Wakefield. Jase Wakefield's been very involved in our community and she's one of our fine, I think she's a back-to-back lifeguard. Anyway.
Addison Mayfield, yep.
Okay. And she balances, you know, her leadership and community service with academics and athletics, and it was just really a nice spotlight to see. This is one of our fine residents. I mean, growing up in this community where it takes a village, I mean, I love the branding. I walked in today to see the new board. I put my water bill in the, in the new Rose Point Shores receptacle. I mean, you know, it says, "Do not put cash." I mean, it was, I mean, very nice, very nice. The other one had a fair amount of rust on it. But I mean, everything that right now is going along very good. We're very responsive. Sir, thanks for coming and letting us know. I mean, we, we, we need to do more. We need to stay on top of this. It's not something that you could say you can coast at this point in time. You can always make improvements and that's what we need to do in order to keep the people here. We're seeing more kids that went to Chicago after school, moved to Chicago, they're moving back here, they're looking for homes in Rose Point. I get calls like every month saying, you know, the house for sale, my son's moving back and I'm gonna help them look for a house, preferably Rose Point Shores, maybe Rose Point Woods, because this was their home. This is where they grew up and they want to be reacquainted with the community that they, that they learned to love. So, well, at this point, we're going into closed session and we need a roll call, move into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. And again, I thank everybody for coming. I know it's a nice day when you could be doing something else. Dale, thanks for all the work.
I actually enjoy it.
I took the trolley and I said, it was like a, you know, like an antique. But Steve told me about.
Steve was also, he was already recommending for the winter Christmas leg tours, really.
That was awesome. We did deal with ours.
No, it was really nice.
It was awesome.
We just need a couple bags for Tuesdays, I think.
Actually, we run up to 4:00 AM.
Yeah, see, that's actually a nice.
Well, the trolleys, they've been popular at the park. Basically, at COVID stopped the service and then they auctioned them. I was disappointed as how I got back involved.
Oh, thank you.
But there's days on a Friday, Saturday evening on the normal virtual strip, it'll run 750 feet on two nights. I don't know how long it'll continue.
See, that, that would be neat to have here, like around Christmas time, maybe.
Yeah, I think.
Have Christmas carols or caroling, have volunteers or, you know, I like that.
What's there for the asking? It's free.
Thank you, Dale. And Ken, thank Mike, you know, Jen, Ted, Debbie, thank you. But at this point, we've convened our regular meeting. We're gonna move back into open session. We need a roll call. Okay, those of you who are avoiding a roll session. Okay, at this point, we're back in open session. We talked about agreement, tentative agreement with ASSE, A.S.S.C.M.E., Michigan 925. Danielle, do you, would you make the motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we.
Ratify the tentative.
Ratify a tentative agreement or approve a tentative agreement with ASSE, A.S.S.C.M.E., Michigan 925.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, okay, Bob did.
About second.
Any further discussion? Don, Al, and Taylor, say hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you all.
Our next guy's last name for the miss, Antu.
Antu, F.A.N.T.U.
I brought it out of here. Nice to see everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Bye-bye. Our next council meeting is Tuesday, August 20th. Need a motion to adjourn. Say hi.